One.
Good evening and welcome to the Milton Planning Board. This is the eighteenth meeting of fiscal year 2021. My name is April Anderson. I'm the chair. We'll introduce the board. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
You're moving around there.
I am.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Taggias, member, and I'm stationary.
Denny Swenson, Secretary.
Great, and our Town Planner and our Assistant Town Planner are unable to join us tonight, but we do have another member of the team, Julia.
Julia Getman-Clark.
Great. Rich Beeler is also a member of the Planning Board. He will be late this evening. He has a commitment for his children. He will be late, but we are gonna move right along. This meeting is being held via the Zoom format per the Governor's Executive Order relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. The April fifteenth meeting of the Planning Board will be closed to the public to avoid group congregation, but access shall be provided via the Zoom platform. And the call-in information is on our agenda. The meeting is also being taped live by Milton Access TV and will be available on demand. Okay, so we have a relatively concise agenda here tonight. Sorry, I'm submitting people as I talk. The, we don't have any applications before us. Most of our zoning discussion is over, although we do have a couple of things to resolve tonight. But I do want to just remind the board that you have a very busy May ahead of you with town meeting. We have a public meeting on the Winter Valley proposed zoning on April twenty-sixth at seven PM. That's not listed on our agenda here. We also have two, you will have two regular meetings in May, on the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, and town meeting starts, I think it's May third. And is expected to go for a few nights. So one scheduling item to address is whether or not we want to book time and notice a meeting prior to town meeting. So I will let you three decide, because I will not be there.
Don't look so happy.
She's escaping.
I will still be on town meeting, so I'm not really getting out of much. So what do you think? Do you all want to meet?
I think we, I mean, I think we might have to. Because there may be some issues that come up in terms of people offering amendments. And I think we would have to address that.
Okay, so what, I said, you want to notice it for thirty minutes prior, which would be seven AM?
Yeah.
Okay, so Julia, if you can arrange for a Zoom for the board at seven on May third, I mean, should you carry it through every night and just cancel it if you don't need it, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, because it may be that we don't get to zoning for the first couple nights if it goes that long.
Right.
It probably won't.
Yeah.
Okay, Julia, you got that?
We also talked about having an off, another method to have us be able to discuss during town meeting, so like Microsoft Teams, I think it was. I've forgotten if it was Teams, but.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last week. Do you have any updates on that?
I thought Julia had mentioned it was Google something.
Google Meet? It's either Google Meet or Microsoft Teams. I can't remember which one, but we definitely need that, I believe.
Julia, did you, were you the one who was gonna look into it, or was that Allison?
The Google, the Google Meet thing? I will look into it tomorrow.
Okay, okay.
For anyone who was assigned to that, but we'll figure it out.
Okay, and then we can regroup and confirm on the twenty-sixth, Cheryl.
Yes, that sounds good.
Perfect. And the point of that, just for anybody watching, is so that the board has an opportunity to confer with one another during the town meeting. Should items of interest come up or amendments to the zoning articles. Okay, so we have some meeting minutes, I think. Denny?
I, yes, um, I, did everyone see? I was trying, I'll turn it.
There we go. I just admitted you twice.
Sorry, I was trying, I can watch, I can watch two different things, but I won't do it tonight. Okay, so, um, I was, I, did everyone see Cheryl's amendments?
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with them.
And, and I sent two.
Right, but you sent one to the executive session that we can't approve until we're in an executive session. So, but I thought we could say affordable land count as opposed to town count, town land count?
No, I gave the language on that, and I.
Well, you, you gave a definition. Did you say that definition during the meeting, though?
Well, yes, we did, because it was a talk about the, it was, it's not proper to sort of say town land count and not say what it's for. And so we did talk about the fact that it was for, you know, the chapter forty B purposes and stuff like that. So I just, I just don't think it, if somebody's reading this, they're not gonna know what that town land count means.
Okay, no, I agree with you. I, I thought we should, I thought we should say affordable land count or something other than town land count, because standing alone, you don't know what it means. But I just didn't want to add something to the minutes if it hadn't been said in a meeting. I didn't, in all fairness.
Do it in parentheses, maybe, Denny, just as a.
Sure.
Use as like a, to clarify? So that it's not implied to be a direct quote?
I don't think I said that, so do, can you just share what the words are?
Um, do you have them, Kathleen?
Yeah, hold on a second. I sent them to.
Yeah, it's in, it's in an email.
I have like a hundred of them today.
I can look for it, too. Let me look for it, save us some time here. She just defined affordable land count, which I'm fine, but I didn't, and I think April's solution is the way to go.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, she, it was just a definition. Yeah, okay. I agreed with the definition. Okay, so.
I agree, it makes sense to clarify that.
Yep, okay. All right, and I agreed with April's solution, so I think we're all in agreement. So I move to I move to approve the minutes for April eighth, twenty twenty-one, as amended.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, then let's do a roll call of vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Carol Taggias?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell? Uh-oh, I think Kathleen might be frozen. April Anderson, yes? Oh, we lost Kathleen. Let's just give her a second. Sorry, sorry to the audience, but I don't want to vote without, without Kathleen. Looks like she probably lost her Wi-Fi there for a second.
Looks like she's trying, gonna have to try and get back in.
Yeah.
She's figuring out her technical difficulties. I want to log back in, but not have that echo thing happen, and I'm gonna see if I can do that without disrupting the meeting.
Never a dull moment on Zoom, right?
No.
April, are you looking for her to join as a, as a panelist? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And no one's requested admittance.
We probably have enough to approve the minutes.
We can, I was just gonna see if she has.
Yeah.
Another person in the waiting room, but it's not her. Okay. I do not see her, so let's just take the vote. We already took the vote, and it's read in the affirmative, so I guess we can move on. Okay, we don't have a staff update for tonight, because our Town Planner and Assistant Town Planner are out, and we already talked with had no particular updates for us, so we can move now into Citizen Speak. And if anybody would like to be heard during Citizen Speak, please raise your hand. And there are no hands raised. So, the next item of business is discussion of D-one zoning at Winter Valley. We spoke last week, and I do not see Ned Corcoran here. He was supposed to come back to us and answer a couple of questions. One was related to proposed height of the building, and one was related to impacts on Home Inc. Or projected impacts this zoning might have on Home Inc. So I don't see Ned in the meeting. I know that Tim did reach out to him, and he was expected to attend. So perhaps we should.
I'm texting him now to see.
Okay. Jeez, this is a slow-going meeting.
This one was added or changed, so maybe it gets through people, right?
Here we go, here's Kathleen.
Oh, Kathleen's back.
One thing about that zoning while we're waiting, April. You know, Tim had shared with us guidance, updated guidance on the housing choice. And I was noting that it puts a responsibility on the Planning Board to make a decision about whether we think it qualifies for those reduced thresholds of voting. So I thought maybe we needed to talk about that before town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we should probably do is ask, hi Kathleen, welcome back. Kathleen, we took a vote on the minutes without you. I hope you don't. Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened. You were frozen for a minute, and then you disappeared.
Well, it was, yeah, and I couldn't get back in, because apparently no one likes me.
So we're talking about Winter Valley zoning, Kathleen, just to bring you up. We were expecting Ned Corcoran to come back tonight and share with us his insights relative to building height. If you recall, his article had forty-eight feet, I believe, and Cheryl asked him to kind of regroup on that and take a second look.
Well, I think the question was, I think we, we asked him was to make sure that we didn't, as Denny was concerned about unintended consequences, that we were making a change in one place
of Home Inc.
the other zoning district.
So that was the second item, yeah.
On the only place that has the same zoning is the thing on Pine Brook.
Home Inc., yeah.
Go ahead, Denny, sorry.
Oh, in fairness, I, I just, before the last meeting, I just quickly looked at the zoning map and noticed that it was home, and noticed that Home Inc. had D-one. But that was just a quick, like, three-minute check right before the meeting. I, I, you know, I didn't know, you know, the zoning map I looked at looked like Home Inc. had that, so that so I just wanted some assessment to make sure that that was the case. It's.
That was a good question.
And also, forty-eight feet high in Home Inc. is, is a bigger impact than forty-eight high on Winter Valley. The way it's set up in Winter Valley, it's, it's, it's really nice, and it's open around it, and I really want that to work. Is it possible he could go back to the ZBA and get a waiver? Would he have that as, as, as a backup plan if he doesn't get the zoning? If he did?
There's a concern about, there's a concern, you know, with, it's not waivers, it's variances, and with variances, there's opportunity for appeal. And so you have to be able to demonstrate that there was, you know, a hardship, basically, right, Kathleen? Truly, for a variant?
There's a higher threshold for variances. It's not like a special permit. It's a, it's a, you're requesting a waiver of the zoning. And so you have to show some hardship. I mean, there's real standards that have to be met. In most towns, unlike here, people don't give, boards don't give variances, except it's very rare occasions. We here in Milton give them a lot more often than other towns, but that's because most of our, most of our dwellings don't comply with zoning. So, you know, so they kind of have to get variances. But that would be, it would be an issue, and the other issue is that he has to notify all the abutters, and some of the abutters are some more contentious than others, so.
Yeah, so I mean, I think the challenge is because of all of the controversies surrounding the nearby forty B, that this could be a harder way for, a harder project for ZBA to get to yes on, just because, or even if they do, it's probably more, much more likely to get appealed, because.
But I, I think that that neighborhood would actually be in support of it, the, the forty B neighborhood, because.
Well, the forty B developer might not be.
Forty B would, the developer would not, because he could, because Ned represents the abutters. So, you know, it's a perfect opportunity for somebody to throw a monkey wrench in for.
So, Denny, six forty-eight Canton Avenue is an abutter to Winter Valley?
Okay. Didn't, I didn't.
No, anyways, I think that's, that's why there was a second, a second thought. I mean, it's certainly possible. Anything is possible, but I do think we should probably get.
So I have, I haven't heard from him. I know he, he, I had spoken to him on another matter, and he said, by the way, he had, to me, he said he had spoken to the architect for Winter Valley, and that he had been working on the height question. So I anticipate that they're working on an answer. Maybe they're thinking it would be for the public hearing rather than for tonight. So, but I, I do think that they can bring that height down and still have the number of units that they desire, and I think that would be it would be much better, because where forty-eight feet, I think for three floors, is just way more than we would ever normally consider for a three-story. If we think about our zoning, it's two and a half stories and thirty-five feet, and so adding thirteen feet to get another half-story just is a lot, right? So I, I think if I, if that architect and I wanted, you know, if he wanted to speak to me, I think we could probably talk that through and get that down to something less.
So we'll just defer this item to the end of the meeting, and if Ned joins us and wants to discuss it, great. And if not, you can do it at the public hearing on the twenty-sixth. The other item, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Denny.
I was like, I, I just thought of one, one factor, and that is, I don't think that there is already a thirty-two unit building on Home Inc. And I'm guessing there's probably a reason for that. Maybe the land, like I had brought up last week, maybe there's wetland or something that we don't know about. Because the, the way I read the citizen's petition, it's that currently D-one allows a thirty-two unit building. Now, what this citizen petition would be doing would be saying, still allowed to do a thirty-two unit, but in addition, you're allowed to do a thirty-six unit. That's the way that I read the citizen petition issue. Okay, so if they, for whatever reason, have not already put in the thirty-two unit, maybe they just will never put in an additional.
The Home Inc. is all built. It's all, you know, little duplex townhouses and stuff.
When I looked on the map, there was a lot of green, so I couldn't, I mean, I just.
Yeah, but there's also a brook.
Um, yeah, I walk by there a lot. There's, there's somewhat, like at the intersection of Canton Avenue and Lujos Parkway, it's, it's kind of wet. There are some areas which are not wet. But they could also, even without this amendment, they could build many more units per the zoning than what they've built. And that's been in its current state for, I don't know how many decades. My understanding is it's one of the kinds of developments where it's rental, but you pay in a fee. And so I don't know how the ownership structure is, you know, like what's the entity that decides? Does it, is it the nonprofit itself, or do each of the people who paid in have a voice in deciding whether they're going to build more?
No, 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 they're rent, they're tenants. So it's a standard, it's a, it's a familiar model that I've seen before for elder housing, where you do, you pay a capital fee to come in and pay rent. Some of that comes back when you, if you, you know, when you die, that sort of thing. So it's really owned by the corporation. They don't have, the tenants don't have any property interests.
So if the if the corporation, the nonprofit corporation wished to, currently, they could apply for another, an amendment to a special permit, Kathleen, as far as you understand it, because they, there's other they have capacity within what they've built and the zoning to add units if they so choose.
Well, I mean, I'd have to take a look, see what they've done in, with their original special permit. And, and I didn't do that, because I thought that was kind of a question that Ned should be answering.
You're right, yeah. So that's what I just want to say, is that I just want to remind everybody that this is a citizen's petition. The development team came before us in an informational session, and I think they were well received. There was general support from everyone that I heard for the concept, but at that time, we were not told that there was a zoning article that accompanied it. At the meeting, we had a discussion about a potential zoning article. We asked Ned to come back to this meeting and answer some questions, recognizing that there's not much time between now and town meeting. I would have thought that they would have wanted this opportunity on a televised planning board meeting to help educate the public about what this is about and help us get to yes, but maybe they don't. But in any case, our obligation is to vote on this. With, the Planning Board has to vote on town meeting or citizens petitions relating to zoning before the town meeting. So that rushed to publish the meeting notice for the twenty-sixth, so that we could make a decision one way or the other. So we'll have some of these questions that have to be answered, but I agree with you, Kathleen, it's a citizen's petition. We asked Ned to do some research on this, and hopefully he'll come back and let us answer those questions. On the topic, the governor's or the housing choice legislation, I believe that this would be a simple majority vote, because it's clearly multifamily housing. Affordable housing, but I think we should get Kevin Freitag to confirm that for us and come to the twenty-sixth public hearing as well.
I would just like to put the, this zoning request into context, if I may. You know, the Housing Production Plan is something that I think we have to continually kind of refer back to, and how we have a goal of trying to achieve an annual amount of affordable units, and this is age-restricted and at a lower AMI than the eighty percent that we typically see. I think it was at fifty percent AMI, so for, for this age-restricted, low-income, thirty-six units, low-impact, I think it's really, actually, I just heard from Ned here. I really do think it's something that's important for the town. And I, I do think on the twenty-sixth that we should, you know, hopefully Ned will have some answers, but we shouldn't think of it just purely as a citizen's petition in some ways, because of achieving some of those goals that we're looking for.
I agree. I think, I think we all agree. I think everybody likes the project. I think we're just pressed for time, and I think these are pretty legitimate questions. I mean, we don't want to, I think we all love the idea that this is a one-hundred percent affordable project. It's for seniors and physically challenged individuals, which are specifically called out in our Housing Production Plan as a population that's struggling and sitting on long, long wait lists to get housing, which may or may not ever become available. So I think this generally is something that the board as a whole was very supportive of. I do think there are some questions about implications on other properties that need to be flushed out, but hopefully we can do that, and the height. You know, that needs to be addressed, but hopefully we can get to yes at the next meeting, which would be really good. But let's not close this out, because in, in the event that Ned joins us, did he say anything about his comments tonight, Cheryl?
Well, I, his reply was one word, no. So I guess he wasn't planning to join us. I will just make a note that we were thinking he was.
Okay. And I asked him at the last meeting to come back to this meeting, and he said, okay.
Okay, I'll just, maybe we can come back to it.
Yep, let's not close it out in case he becomes a villain.
Okay.
So the second item on our agenda is discussion of Cottenville zoning amendment, so under the heading of Nothing is Ever Easy. That we are all one-hundred percent in favor of, which we effectively refer to as the tree zoning by law. Denny, do you want to outline, do you feel comfortable outlining what the challenge here is? Or do you want me to do it?
I'll let you do it, and I'll chime in after, as I.
We know what we are trying to.
Because I couldn't understand what was going on.
Yeah, so we were trying to achieve tree protection during construction, and I think the spirit is well-intended, and we all agree with it. So Denny did some work with the town, with Cheryl, and some other folks in town, including the building inspector, drafted some language, and everyone agreed to it. At some point, there was a piece of language that had fallen out, and we don't know when, through the drafts. So the article that went to, into the warrant is missing some key language that was really critical to the article. The challenge is that now the way the zoning article reads, it changes a whole variety of things for the building inspector. So it's not, it changes his process, and it, and it applies to every single project. So if there's somebody who's just doing an addition to their house that is potentially going to impact a tree, they have to go through a whole new, a whole new approval process, and I don't, I don't have Tim.
Okay, actually, I could help, I could help. So the, the very, the very final amendment that we had said, the very final, like, number eight, the very last thing we said was, I, I want to get the beginning sentence for you. The the provisions of section four A shall be deemed not to prohibit the removal of earth materials as may be necessary for the purpose of constructing foundations for buildings or for other allowable construction for which building permits have been issued. And then our new language was, so long as the grade of the surrounding land, oh, this is the language we want to add, which is more than thirty feet from the foundation or other allowable. oh, this is the language we want to add, which is more than thirty feet from the foundation or other allowable construction is not substantially altered. We want to add that phrase so that so that people can build houses, you know, people can take down trees to put in a new foundation. Or like April said, if somebody needs something right around their house, or so they have that thirty feet. But once, once they're altering, I'll I'll continue the sentence, a substantial change of grade is a change which would make survival of existing trees unlikely or which requires retaining walls. So those are the times that we want the ZBA and even the planning board to be able to say, if you're altering the grade to the point where you need retaining walls, or it's going to impact trees thirty feet away from that foundation, then, then, you know, we want to be able to come in and say, this isn't, you know, we, let's come up with another solution here. Okay, so it's not that language was lost, we had language, it was there from the very beginning. Um, Joe Prondak noticed it recently and said, oh, wait a minute, the implications are that every time somebody puts a foundation in, or every time somebody wants to, you know, put an addition on or anything, I have to go get a special, I have to tell them to go to get a special permit. And we didn't want to exhaust the future planning boards having to do special permits every time, you know, a foundation needed to be poured or what have you. But but adding the thirty feet language would allow us um to maintain the integrity of what we, the whole reason we were doing all this tree protection is that, okay, you you have freedom thirty feet around your foundation, but but if you're going to change the grade, in whatever you do there, if you're going to change the grade so much that you're going to need a retaining wall, or you're going to harm the trees thirty feet away from the foundation, then then the planning board of the ZBA can weigh in and say, no, they can also weigh in and say it's okay. That's what that language means.
Yes, so it gets a little complicated from here, though, because Kevin Freitag suggested that adding in that thirty-foot buffer, if you will, around an existing.
I agree with him.
It's out of scope. Right.
The question for us is we can still make some minor modifications to the bylaw that clean up a couple of minor issues for Joe Prondak now and not change this piece um and cut that whole paragraph out, so it doesn't apply, sorry, I'm still admitting people, it so that um we can make an adjustment so that the floodgates don't, do not open, which addresses Prondax, Mr. Prondax's issue. They, it will not achieve the same level of true tree protection that we were originally intending, but it's a small step in the right direction. And then take it up later. This would be via green sheet at town meeting, the mi- the minor modification. Or we can choose to hold this item, ask that if you refer it back to the planning board at town meeting, and do a more sweeping change, which was al- always intended anyways, with Cheryl and Joe Prondak, you guys can work on it until um the next town meeting in the fall and take care of this tree issue at the same time as the Cottenville issues that Cheryl wants to address.
So if I could say, so what I would suggest we do is we strike the the, it's just a, just basically a sentence, we just strike the sentence, it's number eight. And it's it's a, all we're doing is we're crossing out a substantial change of grade is a change which would make survival of existing trees unlikely, or which requires retaining walls, we're just striking that. Um, a- actually, the sentence before it too, so long as the grade of the surrounding land, which is, so we're just going to strike that and through a green sheet, have everything else move forward. And then when Cheryl goes in with the engineer and and I hope to be on that working group, um, we will add in the language that we want about the thirty feet from the foundation. So we'll get it right, but we'll get it right, we'll we'll get that piece right later. That's my feeling.
Okay, so I don't know if any people, anyone else has other feelings about this, but what I would suggest, Denny, is if we want to advance something with a green sheet that we have, Tim, put that language together, because we don't have any, like, a zoning article, you know, with strikeout language or anything before us for tonight, unfortunately, so maybe what we can do is, you can call Tim, unless anybody wants to object to this, that sounds fine by me, but I think we should wait and see it and vote on it on the, can't vote on it on the twenty-sixth. I guess we can, we can still publish a regular meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we have time.
Yeah, it'll be easy.
And just vote on it then, when everybody can see what we're talking about.
Yep, and in Tim's, Tim's letter to us, it was option number two, just so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking for the attached language, but he didn't attach the language.
No, I'm looking at it right now on my screen, I don't see it. And I think it's uh fine to have it, uh, have him prepare it, and we vote on it on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
And um you know, we oftentimes have to do something like this, unfortunately.
Yeah, I mean, the green sheets aren't ideal, especially in a Zoom, but that's okay, we can ask the town clerk to send it out in advance to everybody. I've seen her do that for other articles.
Well, it's a lot easier when you're striking something.
Yeah, that's true, it is true.
Yeah, that's right.
Everybody will be like, oh, thank you for making it shorter.
Yeah, and I mean, honestly, we haven't heard from a single member of the public or any of our boards or any the Warren Committee, no one has expressed any objections to this. I think everybody's on board with making tree protection a priority, so if it were a super controversial item, I think I might think differently about it, but since it hasn't been controversial, and it's kind of like America and apple pie, which, we should find a way to make it work.
Well, one I, one of the things I think I mentioned before, and I would like to mention again, is that, and because I've been carefully reviewing the forty B applications, is these uh applications are such large projects that they're removing every single tree. And I, you know, I think that having to identify the waivers that they're seeking, including removal of all the trees, puts it an accountability level, which I like.
I do too. And it and it's, and it creates the impression that this is an important valued thing to the town from the very beginning, which in my, in my opinion, I think developers are trying to do what the town wants them to do, they just don't always have it in print. So putting these types of things in print helps them understand that this is a priority. So I think it's a really good thing. So what, so our plan for this one will be, we'll get some language that we can look and pull up on the screen on the twenty-sixth and hopefully move forward with a green sheet. It'll still give us time to notify the Warren Committee and the town clerk and the moderator. Hopefully, we can get a green sheet out to everybody, assuming we approve one prior to town meeting, and this will be an easy fix. Sound good?
Yes.
Denny, thank you, and I apologize to you for butchering the explanation.
No, I did too. It's a, it's a, it's a simple thing.
That they got deleted, yeah, so apologies.
Yeah.
I still don't see any um representatives in Winter Valley, so let's go on to the twenty.
Can I just um add some information on that while we were discussing this? I took a look online, and there is a conservation restriction on fourteen acres of the um Pine Brook property.
Of Home Inc., High Tree Brook?
See, look at there.
Hey.
Kathleen found the answer.
And I'll tell you that Ned did reply, and he said it was his understanding that he was to come on the twenty-sixth, and he wasn't prepared to speak tonight, so I guess there was some misunderstanding.
Okay. So that might be the solution, which I think would make us all happy.
Yep.
Yeah, as it says, fourteen acres, I'm trying to get a copy of the plan now, but um, but I think that answers the question about what they could build out there.
Is that something Kathleen could share um with the board if she finds it um in preparation for our meeting, because that will be one less thing to.
What, the plan or the?
Yeah, the 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 plan and the restriction, so that we can all have done our homework as we go into the meeting.
I mean, I mean. For those of you I'm watching at home, is book seven, eight, one, three, page seven, one, nine, it's the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds.
Oh. Seven, eight, one, three.
Three, page seven, one, nine.
Well, leave it to you, Kathleen. Yeah. All right, so that's, I mean, I think, again, I, to Cheryl's point, I don't want to create the impression by saying that it's a citizen's petition, that it's not something that we were favorable about, because I think everybody really liked what we saw. I think we had some, a couple of questions, which are a couple thousand less than we normally have, um because it's a good idea, and I think we all liked the spirit of what was hoping to be achieved. And so hopefully, like I said earlier, hopefully we can get to yes on that article, because it's timely and it's important, and I think we all value the sentiment, so hopefully we'll get there. Um, okay. Shockingly, the only other item on our agenda tonight is the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And Tim had sent us an email, I'm just going to pull it up, outlining the balances in our accounts, which is very helpful. So the remaining FY twenty-one balance for the planning board is thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And the rough estimate of the remaining balance for FY twenty-one and the Master Plan Implementation Committee budget is twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one. And just as a reminder, this is monies that were approved to be spent as of last July first through this year of June thirtieth. So this is money that technically expires to us on June thirtieth, and then we will have a new budget that will be considered the first week of May for the fiscal year twenty-two, which would start July first. So this is uh, you know, more money than I thought we had, which is good. But I think we have a lot of competing demands for it. I think the two that we discussed last week is priorities, where, or the last time we met, which I guess was last week, um, were the design guidelines for Milton Village, which we talked about during the the rezoning, and I think are important to the neighbors and many folks that approved that project, voted in favor of it, and I think to maintain the spirit of moving forward, we really need to address those. And then the second item that we talked about was another item that had been discussed before several times, is doing a count of our available land for development, um, which is a component of chapter forty B. Um, so I don't know if anyone, Denny, one of the things you were going to do was, I think you were going to look into the cost estimate or get a kind of a round number of what we might think a land count would cost.
Yeah, I I did a while ago, I went back and I looked at my notes, and I had in my notes seven thousand five hundred from talking to um, an attorney that specializes in um forty Bs. Um, I asked him to land count, but I haven't, you know, I haven't gone out and looked for somebody to do it or anything yet, I could.
Well, that's okay, yeah, I'm glad.
So that's a ballpark.
Yeah, so then, and Tim did a ballpark estimating too, and he found that the Milton Village zoning is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty-five-ish um thousand dollars, so.
For the design guidelines?
For the design guidelines, yes.
Thinking, I'm in the wrong line of business, if that's what it costs to do design guidelines. Seriously.
Yeah. I mean, we have a no, we have some complicating factors there with differences of significant differences of grade, and then the different rules depending on where you're located in the district, so it could get a little more complicated, but who knows? I mean, and and these all have to go through some sort of procurement process, different stages of procurement processes, but we'll figure out the market values, but I think between the Master Plan Implementation Committee, which I don't know if you have other commitments for Cheryl, but Tim thought there was roughly twenty-two thousand dollars, and we have thirty-six thousand, that's roughly fifty-eight thousand that accomplish these two items.
Yeah, I um, I'm a little perplexed, but because I thought the allocation at town meeting last year was thirty thousand for M-PIC and fifty for the planning board, so I'm not sure how M-PIC got forty-seven. Um, so, you know, it's something that um I know has been a question for a while. However, I think it um, the other thing I'll point out is that Melinda Collins told me that town council has advised that five thousand from the M-PIC cannot go to the farmer's market, but that the select board will work to find five thousand elsewhere in the budget.
Oh, boy.
Um, so I uh, I don't know that I was, it was just something she sent in an email to me, I think, yesterday. Uh, because we had spoken about it, just she and I had had a conversation over over the last week and just catching up on things, and that was something that we had chatted about.
Is that because the language of the budget item says studies?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
I was going to mention that when we were voting on it, because I, the language, but yeah.
Yeah, so you know.
Hopefully, we'll make it work either way.
Right, so I just want to mention that 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 may not be encumbered now for that purpose. Um, so um anyway, having said that, there's nothing else that um, I I did mention, actually, the um you know, last week about the idea of uh, doing a pre-development analysis and doing some planning around um a couple of town-owned parcels. And Melinda and I chatted about that too, and um and she is thinking, and she spoke to Allison about that too, and maybe some other source of funds that could be available for that. But I would like, I would like to think about if that doesn't come through, that in the next fiscal year budget, that that be something that be prioritized. Um, and part of it is because uh, some of the planning, it's in a part of Milton that hasn't had, on the west side, hasn't had much planning effort around it. And it's something that Tim is interested in doing, and I think um, it makes a lot of sense. Um, so, because we've had a lot of effort going to Milton Village, and we've put recently into East Milton, we want to make sure that we spread the planning dollars around, right? So I just want to put that out. Um, but otherwise, I'm not, um, you know, I think the two that we've talked about seem the most immediate, you know, um I just, again, for the record, will say that I I um, I have no problem taking a look at the land area calculation, because it's a question that's come up a lot. But I am, I I hope that we are committed to trying to achieve some diversity in our housing stock and to improve our numbers on affordable housing, so that we uh can maintain a diverse community. And I think it's really important that we have um housing at different price points, and it can serve different kind of uh family unit types, so I just want to be on the record um saying that, and saying that we, I hope that we will address that in the next fiscal year budget.
I agree.
Yeah, I'd just like to agree with Cheryl. I I don't know why that came up, um, because the land area calculation is just a matter of planning, it's just how we can plan as a town and 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 to meet those objectives. So I I didn't, I don't quite understand why, knowing the land count would interfere with any of those objectives or goals.
No, it's just a matter of where we're spending the money right now.
Somebody's going to use that as a reason to claim a safe harbor, you know, that's, I mean, that's sort of the issue. The, I mean, I admit I have scar tissue from where we went through this the last time, but um, you know, the reason you're doing the count is to sort of establish whether or not there is one and a half percent of our housing that's low and moderate, so you know, that, so it would be a problem. You can always, of course, Cheryl, just because you're in a safe harbor doesn't mean you have to use it.
No, that's right, exactly, but I I also think that it takes us out of the position, I mean, I think I I may, I may, I I'm assuming that we all want to get to safe harbor and and come to a and 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 be in a position where we're not facing, you know, forty B developers deciding how we develop our town. We'd much rather be in a safe harbor where we can choose and and plan and and create communities within communities that that work and are, you know, more ideal than forty B is the goal. So it's all about planning. Part of planning is knowing where we are land count-wise and where we are unit count-wise.
So the um I think I agree with everything, everybody. I think that it's maybe two different things. I I think that a number of things that we've talked about as far as zoning changes, I mean, the U D U's is an example. Accessory dwelling units doesn't necessarily impact forty B, but it does create the opportunity to create some more affordable housing options and to diversify our housing stock for different residents with, at different price points and need. Um, and I fully support that, so I think, you know, the land count, it's something we've heard about. I don't, I have no idea whether we'll get there or we won't get there, but I just think for the point of, that I mentioned last meeting, people keep asking for it. It seems to be an impediment for a lot of people to get over the hump of a couple of other items that we've been talking about. So if that's, if this is going to resolve that issue for people, then let's pursue it. And if it gets us into forty B safe harbor, great, that doesn't mean we're not going to still keep talking as a community about the need for affordable housing. I think it's just. I think it's just something we should do just for the sake of getting it over with and moving on from the conversation, and actually having some good data to make some good decisions moving forward.
So I think. Do you have a question about the actual initiative, where I think maybe the select board was involved in it in the past? Has anyone reached out to the select board or the housing committee or the Affordable Housing Trust about this initiative?
No, and I think we, well, I don't, I don't think so, but I think that there needs to be a lot more work done on it as far as developing a scope of work. And certainly, getting input from all of those bodies would be not only appropriate, but required probably. So I think what we could do tonight is make a decision about these two items and whether or not we want to dedicate resources to them, and then put Tim and Allison on some of the background work, make sure that these are things that the select board agrees with, develop a scope of work. Again, Affordable Housing Trust agrees with, develop a scope of work, and tee it up, because we don't have a ton of time to get these things done. They don't necessarily have to be complete by June 30th, but we certainly have to get them under contract by then. So there's, time is of the essence, and it's not that easy to get contractors these days, for any type of work, including studies. So what I was gonna propose is, we have, I mean, the other thing, Cheryl, is if we have to dip into a portion of the MPEC budget, the MPEC has to approve it and the select board has to approve it too, for the design guidelines. I was gonna propose, we have, between the two budgets, and I don't want to just assume that MPEC's money is for the taking, but between the two budgets is roughly $58,000 available. Of course, there's still some accounting questions that Cheryl raised, which we may or may not ever get to the bottom of, fresh in '22. So what I was gonna suggest is that somebody make a motion to approve up to $10,000 for the land count, however we describe it, under the condition that the Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Trust are consulted and helped develop the scope. And then up to $40,000 for design guidelines to advance Milton Village. Or Milton Village.
Design guidelines.
And I know that's higher than we were thinking, but they haven't, we haven't actually put an RFP out, and we don't know, and I don't want to have to wait for two weeks between meetings in case it comes back at 36,000 and not 35,000, then you can't execute a contract in that timeframe. So that's why I was suggesting the little cushion, but you guys let me know what you think.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that's fine to me.
All right, so let's do it as two separate votes. And you want to make the land count motion, or should we have Kathleen make it, because she has the technical language?
Let's have her do it.
So, um, so I would make a motion to authorize the expenditure of 10, no, not to exceed $10,000 for the procurement of a, of, an accounting of the amount of property that is dedicated to low and moderate income housing in the town, and as 1.5% of land zone for residential, commercial, or industrial use.
Second?
Oh, second.
Okay, discussion? No, let's do a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Yubral Anderson, yes, okay. And Kathleen, you wanna, I mean, Cheryl, do you want to make the motion up to 40,000 for the design guidelines?
Sure, so do you want us to say that if additional funds are necessary, that we would request that MPEC approve? Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we authorize the town planner to expend up to $40,000 for the procurement of design guidelines for Milton Village, and that if sufficient funds are not available in the planning board budget to seek approval from the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the select board for use of MPEC funds for the completion of those guidelines.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? Call vote, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yubral Anderson, yes. Yay, okay. And that, shockingly, is the conclusion of our agenda.
Oh, I just have actually one thing to provide on, it could be, I guess, citizen speak or staff report.
Let's do the staff report, sure.
Staff report, so I am passing on Allison's, Quinn's staff report on the site visit to the two-family dwelling on Blue Hill Avenue, 92 Blue Hill Avenue, that's being proposed as the affordable units for the Woodmere project. So, so Melinda Collins, me, Allison, and Julie Kramer from the Housing Trust met with Jack Dolly and his property managers to do an inspection of the building. It has been rented, at market rate rented rentals, it's now vacant. We did, and it's sort of an inspection, it's not, it's really not ready for prime time quite yet. It does need some, it does need some work, some improvements to be made to it. But we, I think Julie Kramer will be putting together a list to pass on to the developer. We'd like to keep this, we had a discussion about whether or not it would continue to be a rental or whether we would do it as two condominiums, and the sense of it was that the preference was to go for home ownership rather than a rental. It would have been pushed off to the housing authority to have to manage. And, and we've sort of felt, I think, the discussion sort of was that because Woodmere is a homeownership opportunity, that we should have a homeownership opportunity here with an opportunity for people to, you know, establish some equity and that sort of thing, and so keeping it in line with what the project is, so. That, and so therefore, we were also sort of looking at the improvements that needed to be done to make sure that, you know, these units were, you know, nicer, because the units at Woodmere are gonna be pretty nice. And, and these in Philly, these, you know, these units should have those kind of, as many amenities as could be possibly put. So there's a list that's gonna go back to the developer. We did talk about the idea that it would be, you know, a lit program that we did, like we did with Church Street. They are not under the same drastic time level, the time increase that Church Street was. But we don't want to hold it up either, so we want to keep this moving along, and that's what we'll be doing.
Kathleen, the question. The Church Street one ran into a problem as a two-unit condo with DHCD accepting it. Is that not a concern this time around?
Um, Jack Dolly's already talked to Rieco at DHCD and has gotten sort of preliminary approval for it. I mean, as you know, the last time, you may recall, that DHCD, first of all, doesn't like two-unit condos, period. And secondly, doesn't like off-site units. So going forward, when we are issuing these kinds of permits, we have to keep in mind that these off-site, you know, idea to put your affordable housing somewhere else, out of sight, out of mind, is not really something that DHCD encourages. And we shouldn't either, I think.
They're willing to accept the two-unit condo this time.
But they, they have seen, you know, they.
All so much trouble the last time, I mean, it's like.
Well, as I said, so they know the situation now. I mean, they know the fact the matter is that the way this, we drafted our zoning for these, the permits that we issued, you know, it sort of puts the developer in a tight spot. We don't have any other kinds of options. So, you know, looking at what's available around town, you know? So he's already spoken to Rieco at DHCD, and she's, in general, sort of saying, yes, it's okay.
It seems interesting, I feel like, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
The last time, I, wasn't there an issue that the two-unit condos were too small or something? Was that part of the problem?
No, the issue is always with the two-unit condo.
They just didn't like that period.
For a long time. Two-unit condos, personally, I would never buy, because you don't get along with your neighbor. It's really, this is not good.
Before was the size had to be, was because it was in the zoning.
Our zoning, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, so this one, so the two-unit condos, we have, I gave Church Street the model, and the Real Estate Association has developed a two-unit small condo model that allows for mediation, that sort of thing, and so that is a better model that DHCD has sort of seen and has kind of approved. I think we would still have that same kind of issue of funding, of having the developer fund a capital, a capital account, so that people, people moving in, and if suddenly, you know, the, something goes, there would be already a reserve set aside. You know, so I think that would be something we would encourage, and DHCD like to see that, so that people aren't stepping into, you know, a real mess, so.
Great, I actually just remembered, I had two staff updates also. One is that we have another 40B that's been filed, a site eligibility letter for 728 Randolph Avenue. On our, I am just reminded that we also have a, we have to discuss that on the 26th, because the next planning board meeting won't be until mid-May, and we need to talk about contracts. So Tim will be circulating some materials on that for us to discuss on the 27th.
Question on that, April, will there be a site walk before then?
I don't think so, but let me ask.
Okay, thank you.
If there is, I'll make sure that Tim alerts everyone, as I'm sure he would anyways, but.
And I would just like to say.
That it's not, you, didn't you approve zoning for the stable and the horse thing next door to it?
Well, we have, we have zoning on the books that would allow assisted living there, next door on the horse, the former horse. Well, I think it still has horses, but it was a different use at the time.
Yeah.
The, I'm not sure if this was a property that the late Paul Sullivan had been involved in, but he had talked about putting townhouses there. One time he came to the planning board for a preliminary meeting. I just want to, I glanced quickly at it, is that the full application? It's pretty scant.
Yeah, I got the same thing.
Very scant, let's say. Like not even one building elevation and a site plan, that's it in terms of plans, or there might be a little bit more engineering, but definitely no architecture. So I guess our comment matter is, we have nothing to comment on, or we can't, they haven't presented us with anything. I mean, all right, I'm being cynical, but truly, it's remarkable that they can apply for it with that little bit of information.
But we thought, we thought the same was true at some of the other projects that had maybe a little more text, but half of it was incorrect.
Yeah.
Some of the things are just bizarre, right? So I don't know, I guess this is a pretty low threshold for site eligibility determinations these days. But we, I'll ask Tim to provide a little.
I think that's the message that Mass Housing is sending.
Yeah. So we will get a fuller explanation of whether or not there's any more materials and any information Tim has in a site walk via email from Tim.
And could you also ask him if the town has received any information about the pending ones for Amor Road, Brushel Road, 652 Canton Ave? I haven't heard, and I don't know whether we just haven't heard, or it's just the board hasn't heard.
Okay.
Well, I think they maybe, those guys are probably running into a little bit more of a headwind than they thought they were going to run into on the Canton Ave and on the Blue Hill Ave. I've been listening to the, you know, the hearings on both of them. There's a real problem with stormwater on both of them.
Both of them.
Serious issues with stormwater that haven't been properly addressed by their, by their designer and engineer. So I don't think they thought they were gonna run into that kind of problem.
Maybe on the 26th, we can ask Tim to just give us kind of a high-level overview of what's going on in each project and where they are.
Good idea, good idea.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think they're, they've been, last night, the Canton Ave folks were given the message from the ZBA that they need to do a real rethink.
You mean the Blue Hill Ave?
On the Blue Hill Ave, sorry, on the Blue Hill Ave. That they need to do a serious rethink, and they got that same message from the other ZBA panel on Canton Ave. So they've both been asked, the developer came in on both of those meetings to say in the beginning that they, you know, it was a warm and fuzzy relationship, and they wanted to work with the town, and they were hearing us, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, but they got the message from Jeff Mullen pretty strongly last night that they have some work to do.
That's so good.
That's great to hear.
Yeah. The only other update that I have for you is that there have been some noise complaints with 227 Buzzin Street, the subdivision that we approved.
Yeah, and it's all rock.
Oh, yeah.
It's all rock, and they're removing all the rock, and the neighborhood was concerned about all the rock.
They were right, the neighbors were right.
So, well, one of, some of the feedback is that if we had allowed them to do blasting, it would be well over by now, so. But I do have to say, I have been copying.
No, because they're taking it with little hammers, it's.
Because it's so close to houses, I mean, that's a, that's a tough spot to do.
Yeah.
That's like.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess if it was gonna be a couple days versus a couple weeks, maybe you would choose the louder two-day.
Maybe, yeah, maybe.
But in any case, I do have to say, I've been copying on some correspondence between different folks in the town. I know the building commissioner has been out a couple times. He hasn't found any violations, and the developer is looking at strategies to help reduce that impact, including putting, you know, siding a trailer and some other things between the abutting house and, and the parcel in question that's causing the most disruption. So they're, they're working really hard to try to resolve it, and they're trying to move this along as soon as they can, as quickly as they can. So hopefully, it'll be a non-issue very, very soon. But I wanted to bring it to your attention, in case anybody heard about it, it has been investigated. I know the town administrator's aware of it, the building commissioner's aware of it, Tim's keeping an eye on it, so hopefully, we can get to the bottom of that very quickly.
So April, along the same lines as on the staff update on that, you know, Tim had sent an email to you and I regarding Joe Prondak flagging a change in the grading for one of the units, and I did look at that, and I just wanted to let other members know that I asked Tim to, asked for additional information from the developer on why they needed to make the change, because I feel as if we spent a lot of time talking about grading, and that their plans haven't changed significantly enough for me to understand that it was necessary to make this change. And what, my feeling is, we want to try and hold the line on our permits, you know, that they're not just guidelines that they can come back and say we can't do later. So, I, it's just the same thing as we've been talking about before in terms of grading. It would do more, more regrading than what we approved.
So it's the same topic, but a very different result, which I do want to say. I'm glad, very happy that you brought this up, because, you know, we've had these issues in years past where I had staff somewhere along the line say, oh, it's a slight change, but it's not that big of a deal. Sure, you can go right ahead. You know, we have people on Truman Parkway being flooded out by 333 Brushel Road, or other crazy fiascos in town. So I do want to very much say and thank the building commissioner, who knew that this was something that we spent a lot of time thinking about, and Tim, and Allison, and Julia, and the staff for really spending the time and energy to look into it and reach out and inquire with Cheryl, who's the most educated on this topic and had the most to say about it, to make sure that what was happening onsite was what the planning board had intended and was addressing the concerns of potential abutter impacts and what have you. So while we're sort of annoyed that this cut-and-fill issue keeps coming up, I do want to make sure that the town staff are getting appropriate applause for doing what they should be doing, which is flagging it and bringing it to everybody's attention and really spending time on the due diligence before they just check off and say, oh, sure, it's fine, so.
And to that, and on that one, it's similar to what they did on Highland Street and the cluster development, and I keep forgetting, Marine Way.
Marine Estates.
Marine Estates, yeah. And you can see that through the discussion, that the grading in the end was even the applicant thought was better by. And so I think, you know, having the, being understood from the outset what our goals are, just like we spoke about the trees, having it in that, those revisions that we're talking about, having that in our written requirements, whether it's actual zoning or in other sections of the bylaws or standards, is important, because now when they come to submit their subdivision plans, they see how important the regrading is to us.
Right.
So.
Definitely, and I think that, you know, this stuff that we're dealing with, this complicated stuff, there's state law, there's federal law, there's town regulations, there's conflicting regulations all over the place, and you get into, you finally get your permit, and then you get in the field, and conditions aren't exactly what you thought, so it changes things. you get into, you get, finally get your permit and then you get in the field and conditions aren't exactly what you thought, so it changes things. But we talk a lot about process and I think part of improving the process is making sure, like you just said, Cheryl, that our values as a community are in writing, so that when people come to do business here, they can see, oh, cut and fill is something of importance to them, tree protection, something important to them. And also that all of our town staff are moving in the right direction with us and understand what our, what our, as a board, goals are and intentions are and making sure that they uphold those too. Um, when it's no longer before us, we don't really know what's going on. So there's been a lot of question about what happens once it leaves us. And I think we should be grateful that things seem to be very much improving the house too. Um, and I'm really grateful to all the work of the town staff, so I just wanted to mention it because I in my five years on the board have certainly been critical at times too. So they're doing a great job and I applaud their efforts.
And I just want to say that.
The two is a really good thing.
I just want to say, it's, you know, the the design guidelines should be like the same thing, right? They kind of, they provide some guidance. And, you know, um, there'll be a time when none of us are on the board and people will be left to determine, you know, figure out what was intended by the things, the decisions that are made and the zoning that we write and the guidelines that we put forth. So the more that there's there in writing and documented, you know, the next people who are doing this have that to work off of instead of starting from scratch. So I I do think it's important.
Right. And that's not only for enforcement down the line, which we certainly want, but it's also to signal the market, that's what we're looking for. So I think it's really, it's good all around. So if there is nothing left to say, I think we're able to, I can text um, Rich and tell him he took too long. Got himself out of this meeting. We made all sorts of great decisions, spent all the money.
He was probably signed onto the East Milton ZBA hearing instead.
Oh. All right, so it's been a lovely meeting, ladies, um, but I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved. All right, I'll second it. You can have it.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Taguayus?
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Everybody, good night.
Good night.
Bye.